Select Board Meeting of July 10, 2023. Tonight, we have a pretty light meeting, but a very important and one we have a lot of good subjects to cover, so thank you for tuning in. First on the agenda is a motion to approve the signing of the warrant.
I move that we sign the warrant of June 26, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 26, 2023 meeting. A motion to approve if not of any errors or omissions or any concerns that you have with these minutes.
None whatsoever. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 26, 2023.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Next on the agenda, there are no public hearings, but we do have scheduled appointments. Our first appointment is with our police chief regarding the new ATV policy, which I believe is a good policy. We all read it and went over it, Chief, and thank you for presenting that to us. You'll be explaining it to us, and it's just another tool for enforcement in areas that are difficult for, you know, your regular routine equipment and vehicles can get to. I think this is a great idea. Chief, you're on.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Thank you for giving us option to admit tonight. Yeah, we had it. We did have an ATV. It was pretty big. We've been having some rescue missions lately, but we felt that it probably better served if we got two smaller ATVs. Being it's a terrain a lot better. So, yeah, we got two ATVs. We have trained 20 officers so far. We outfitted them, and we just used it like days ago for search. And we also used it for fireworks the other night. The officers all have to be trained. They were trained by the environmental police, so they certified. They have all the proper safety equipment, and just getting this policy was another step to professionalize the police department.
Very good. Any members have any questions or concerns for the chief?
I think the training and the safety part of it's the most important.
Sure is.
I think you did a great job there, Chief, just to ensure the well-being of the officers. They're going to operate that equipment off-road. We did it. We have the lodge machine that you can get in there if you have to bring someone out. And I know in your policy that that's not what the other machines are meant for. It'd be more of a search and find, and then from there, you determine how you're going to rescue someone. But I think it's very thorough, and the fact that it's geared towards the safety of the officers was critical. And you tap the resources of the environmental police, who are, they're the pros when it comes to going off-road. Great job.
Thanks. Thank you, Tom. Michael?
Jimmy, did you say 20 police officers have been trained?
Yes.
Wow.
It was a very high interest in the operators.
Okay. And I agree with the terrain in the town of Milford, you know, it's a great benefit to have them, you know? And very fortunate to have 20 police officers take the training, you know? So, I don't have any questions. Your report is very well done. I've read it over and over again, and, you know, I agree. I think it's a great benefit to the community. I really do.
Excellent policy, Chief. Thank you. Again, like I mentioned before, it's good. The 20 that you have trained, I'm sure they're on all different shifts, so that's accessible to everybody, too. And like I said, they can go to inaccessible areas that they weren't able to do, and I think that's fantastic. It's that one more tool that protects us even more. And I entertain a motion to accept this policy of the ATV?
So moved.
So moved. Michael?
And I would second that unanimously.
And I, me, too, unanimously. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I do have one more thing.
Sure.
I have a reconstruction of the new officer, so I wanted him to be able to meet the board and also meet the public.
Oh, very good.
Name is Brendan Campbell.
Yeah, welcome.
33 years old. He's from Bellingham. He's married, with a child on the way. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Boilston Police Academy, 2015. He has 10 years prior long-term experience, four years at Framingham State as a dispatcher and patrol officer, and previous to that, six years at Southbrook Police Department as a patrol officer, who was appointed April 24, 2023, and is currently signed to the Dation.
Excellent. Congratulations. So welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Sweet to see you all.
Thank you.
Houston, how's it feeling?
Thank you.
Chief?
Nice to see you.
Great job again.
Nice to meet you. Congratulations. How do you spell your name? Just like this.
B.I.A.
Yep.
D.A.N.
Yep.
And last name C.A.N.P.
Yeah, you're a new.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome.
I know.
Thank you.
I met him in court.
You did?
Yeah, I will do one.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
You, too. Thank you.
Okay. Ricky, next on the agenda is, we were supposed to have a joint meeting with the trustees of Venerable.
Fortunately, we did.
We did everything we had to do. Right.
On the radio, dispatch. We have received no applications.
Okay. So where do we go from here? Just have them continue as business as usual?
Statue doesn't provide for any additional.
Absolutely. Right.
So at this point, we can maybe entertain it, try to prioritize it a little more in the future.
Sure. Or if in the future, the chairman and the rest of the body needs to have another member, they'll let us know.
We'll have to deal with that right now.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Rick. Next on the agenda is Mr. DeLuzio. He'll present a request to the board to approve the inclusion of the Milford section of the Upper Charles River Trail, part of the Massachusetts DRC Trail, and a newly reconfigured East Coast Greenway Trail, which would be the spine route. Mr. DeLuzio, thank you first for coming in and getting us included in this event, too. It was something like a 3,000-mile trek.
Yeah.
From Maine to Florida.
Florida.
From Maine to Florida.
Yeah, Maine.
Right. Right.
Before you start, though, Reno, I got to ask you a question. I was going through this report. How do you find the time to do this?
Believe me, it's getting more and more difficult than I'd been able to because my brain and my fingers don't work as they used to.
It must take you hours.
No, I've been doing this for so long. It's not that big.
Okay.
You only see the tip of the iceberg. There were two, three committees.
Wow.
Anyway, besides what?
Yes.
Sentation for asking.
You're welcome.
Okay. Let's see. By way of introduction, the Metro West Greenway Coalition has taken the lead in this community level to support the East Coast Greenway. There is an issue of hierarchy that was done on this one. It looks like there's a local coalition that's supporting the East Coast Greenway Coalition. They contacted me and requested the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee bring this initiative to the Milford Select Board to join with the other towns of Framingham, Sherwin, and Holliston to endorse the collusion, the inclusion of the Upper Charles Trail and the East Coast Greenway. And that's why I'm here tonight. Next. This is a map that shows the entire route from Maine to the southern tip of Florida and beyond. By the way, this map is on the East Coast Greenway website. It's an interactive map, which is very informative. So if anybody's interested, just Google East Coast Greenway map, and you can then zoom into all the details on this overview. Now, East Coast Greenway at Glance, obviously, it's a bold, in my experience, it's a very bold and ambitious 3,000-mile vision from Maine to Florida. The secondary routes also are being looked at for 9,000 miles. It's hosted by 50 million users in 2022, consisting of bikers, runners, and walkers, and it's the most popular park in America.
Wow.
It's connecting people. It's designed to go where people live. Route travels through 25 cities, 450 communities in all, and connects local and visitors as they walk, run, bike, and more. And we see that situation on the Milford Upper Charles Trail as well. Obviously, it's an investment in a healthy, sustainable future. It's good for business, public health, and transportation, and creates an equitable linear park for everyone to enjoy. Now, here's some East Coast Greenway by the numbers. 35% is complete, approximately 1,050 miles designated. In 2022, 18 new segments in 11 states were initiated, and of 70 projects, over $200 million in private and public funds have been invested so far. Well, summary of possibilities. Benefits of designation designated, obviously, it could have many additional users to open. And it has economic benefits in that trail users tend to patronize local businesses. It's good for promoting rides, runs, and walks. Now, the cost to the town of, including Milford Upper Charles Trail and this Greenway, is to install and maintain the East Coast Greenway signage on the trail now, and possibly a display of a kiosk if we propose one and they approve it. Now, East Coast Greenway provides the signs, but they don't provide the signpost.
Okay.
So Milford will be responsible for that. And also, there's a 21-page sign manual on their website if anyone's interested in what all the sign variations are, especially for the on-road segments. You know, this trail can all be off-road. It's a combination of off-road and on-road. Now, this breaks the map down in a little more detail. The Metro West Coalition is focusing on Framingham, Sherwin, Holliston, and Milford. And this shows that, well, one point I want to make here is that the Bruce Freeman Trail from the north is intended to connect to Framingham, then Framingham to Sherwin, Sherwin to Holliston, and Holliston to Milford. Sherwin has a small piece on the roadway. They haven't progressed very far with the development through their town, but they're still working on it. Holliston is completed, and their surface is stone dust. Milford has been completed, and our surface is asphalt.
Excuse me, Reno. Where would one go after Milford?
We're going to get to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. The next map shows it again in more detail. It shows it from the Milford-Holliston Town Line to Mont Pleasant Street. That's all this endorsement is asking for right now. We'll talk about Paul's question is in a moment.
Sure.
The one I handed out, this last one is not in your packet, but it's here next. That's the termination at Mont Pleasant Street right now.
Oh.
Behind Sacred Heart.
Behind Sacred Heart. Yep.
Yeah.
Very oriented?
Uh-huh.
Now, there is an issue. If you look at their online map, to continue on from Mont Pleasant Street, it proceeds down up Mont Pleasant Street, up to Allerton Street, the top of Mont Pleasant, crossing Central, and then off to South Central Street. Now, when I looked at that, and anybody familiar with Mont Pleasant Street knows it's very crowded and a very steep slope to get up to Allerton Street.
Yep.
So this is not going to work for people who have limited physical abilities to traverse this harder. So I came up with an alternate route that instead of heading down Mont Pleasant Street, we turn the corner and head down B Street, which is wider, and is wide enough to accommodate even bike lanes in the future, then up E Street, and then E Street Extension to South Central Street. Now, their map from South Central Street to Bellingham is the same, and we're not proposing to change that. That from South Central Street goes to Beaver Street to the Bellingham Town Line Grove Street. And we don't know what Bellingham is doing.
Okay.
So Paul, sorry to answer your question.
See, it'll take us right.
What happens in the future?
So by this foot here, it'll take us right to the Bellingham.
Town Line.
Town Line.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. And, excuse me, Reno, that adjustments that you made, would they have to be approved by the association, the East Coast Greenway?
Yeah.
That would have to be approved?
First of all, I want to tell you that I've been reviewing this with Scott Chris Foulies Highway Survey.
Yeah.
He concurs that Mont Pleasant Street to Hill of Mont Pleasant is a bad idea.
Sure.
So he concurs with this alternative route. Now, I contacted them, and I asked for the procedure to change their map.
Okay.
So I haven't received that.
All right. Yeah.
But we'll follow that up.
Sure.
But this is a very long-term situation.
Yeah.
It's not an emergency. But if it's a long process, the sooner we get it started, the better, because when it does arrive at that doorstep, we'll have an agreed-upon route.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Now, your endorsement, I mean, your packet includes two documents, an endorsement letter and a trail designation nomination application. And as I said before, the endorsement letter is limited to Mont Pleasant Street. It doesn't.
Right. So would we have to change that? I mean, we shouldn't send the endorsement letter in until this other route is approved?
No, in fact, I did contact them, and they advised we just endorse.
Oh, okay. So we're part of the program?
Yeah, and they said, yeah, this is something we usually work on.
Sure.
But they didn't want to be getting the community committed to at least parts that are already been.
Exactly. Right. Thank you.
So that number of starts can go up rather than stay stagnant.
Right.
There's a lot of missing links to this, but that's a topic for another discussion.
Sure.
Let's see. Oh, yes. The inclusion is supported by the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee, and Sherwin and Holliston Select Boards have already endorsed their segments. Now, in the trail designation nomination application, this is a form that requires a description of the characteristics of the trail, management, property rights issues, and portals, et cetera. And there are two things that I want to bring to your attention, in that we are unique in property rights, ownership. The town, either in Fee or Eastman, owns all of the property rights in the Milford Upper Charles Trail, except the NEP National Bridge, right away from Route 109 to Zane Bridge. That is on a 99-year renewable lease. They could not grant the town in Eastman. But in fact, the federal regulations had to be changed because of our project, not only ours, but others were looking for other qualifications to apply for funding other than owning the property in Fee or Precedent. The federal government changed the regulation to allow long-term renewable leases.
Oh, good.
So we're good for 100 years.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do any simple or.
No.
And the other issue is the project manager. If you look at that document, you have to specify a project manager. I thought the most logical person would be Scott Chris Foulies Highway Survey for a number of reasons. He is also Park Commissioner, so he'd be able to assure that the signs that we post on the trail are appropriate. And then for the long term, here is his successor, who's in charge of the street signs, but he could recommend to you where the street signs ought to be located from Mont Pleasant to Bellingham, if you approve, because the Select Board has to approve those signs. So I thought, and we agreed, that Scott Chris Foulies would be the right choice. He agreed to take on that role.
Good.
Okay, so you have spoken to him, and he's willing to.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess that's all I have.
So right now, like I said, with the endorsement letter, just for everybody to know, we're talking about 2.3 miles of Milford, what we're going to be contributing to this pathway.
Yeah.
Right? Good. Okay. Any member have any questions? Mr. DeLuzio?
His reports are always so thorough.
You know, I'm just curious. Do we run this by legal counsel?
I have not. The letter? No, I have not. Oh, sure. It sort of models with the other towns. I couldn't even.
No, I'm asking the question, you know, others may have been in a different position than we're in, and others may reach a different conclusion than our counsel might reach. I just, curiosity sick, my sense is to run it by legal counsel, and if everything's okay, I mean, we can take a vote.
I was going to say, we can take a vote.
Contingent upon.
Of endorsement, contingent upon.
You know. I don't have that. I just, I don't want.
We don't want to hold anything up.
I don't want hindsight, someone to say, geez, maybe you should have asked.
Yeah.
Because are we giving up any rights?
Yeah.
Great idea.
Just want to make sure we're not.
Sure. I think that's great. Therefore, I entertain a motion to endorse this with contingent upon approval from our town attorney?
I make a motion that we approve the presentation, the application, as well as the letter contingent upon a subsequent recommendation by town council.
Michael?
I would second that.
And I make it unanimous. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Reno.
Tell the missus I said hello.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four items tonight. I've been informed by the Lions Club, and perhaps you've seen, the pavilion at Louisa Lake has reached pretty much substantial completion. Big thanks goes out to Lions member Len Moore-Cone, Liz Meinini, our town engineer, also a Lions member, Parks Department, Highway Department, Brazza Construction, and all of the club members that helped assist in this great community project. We feel it was greatly, a great collaboration between the town, local businesses, and the club itself. If you get a chance, please go down, take a look. They will be doing a dedication in September, so you gentlemen, I'm sure will be invited to that. I did receive information from David Condry, our Water Department Manager, that after being offline since 2016 to excessive iron and magnesium levels, we're finally pumping 160 gallons per minute into the system at Godfrey Brook. We'll stay at this rate through next week, and then start to add wells and flow gradually after that. This is a new state-of-the-art biofiltration treatment plant. It'll provide a mass DEP-approved rate of 550 gallons per minute, or 800,000 gallons per day once in full operation. It's equipped with a backup generator large enough to run the plant and well field in case of power outages. With the new plant going online, it certainly will help to improve overall water quality and flows throughout the system. The Assessors' Office informed me, and I would like to acknowledge the retirement of Rebecca Alger, Milford's first in-house data lister. She worked in the position for 12 years, developed a systematic inspection schedule, excelling in identifying and correcting data town-wide. She was an important member of the town's first task force, Paul, as you know, and her passion and dedication to fair and consistent property assessments was unwavering. We do wish her the best in her future endeavors. And then finally, I do want to thank Fire Chief Nelson, Police Chief Alvy, Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin for the efforts in making the fireworks a successful and enjoyable event. Also, a special thanks again to the members of the Lions Club. They provided food, beverages, and music for this very special family event, so I want to thank them also. And that's all I have for that.
That was very good, Rick. Thanks. And thank you to everybody that you mentioned, and the best to Rebecca Alger as well, a very good worker for the Assessors' Office. We appreciate all she's did. Old business? Anybody have any old business?
I do not.
Michael?
I do not.
I do not either. And new business? Ricky, Town Administrator, regarding the appointment of the Resource Director?
Yes. As you know, Kristin has moved on to another position, so we did go out and advertise on the town website, indeed. We received actually 47 applications for the position. They were reviewed by myself and Kristin, HR Director. Four candidates were selected to be interviewed. After the interviews, we're recommending Ms. Adriana Robana for the position. She was most recently employed as the Assistant Town Manager, Human Resources Director for the town of Southbridge. She's been a human resources professional for over 20 years. She has a Bachelor of Science degree from Nichols College, and she will be receiving her Master's Degree in Organizational Leadership in 2023. She does have the SHRM Certificate, the Society of Human Resources Management Certificate, and she is bilingual in English and Spanish. If the board would approve this request, we would request that she be placed at Grade 13 Step 1 under Article 2, starting annual salary 108763. We ask that she be allowed to begin working as early as July 31, 2023. She needed a little additional time before she could start. We believe she'll be a valuable addition to the town. Obviously, she'll have big shoes to fill, but she seems very knowledgeable.
Yes, and she does. Just reading her resume and the letter you just sent, Rick, like I said, what I appreciate is the municipal experience that she has as well, because you can see there's a difference between, you know, private and municipal.
It's a big factor. I think Kristin showed that.
Right. Exactly.
And I think it is very helpful.
In the education and also the gumption of continuing her education as well, plus the certifications. Any members have any comments or questions regarding this appointment?
She has a strong resume, so I'm comfortable, and I'm comfortable with the fact that I know the Town Administrator, as well as Kristin, you know, they've vetted through the applicants, so I'm confident that we reached the right conclusion.
Michael?
You know, Rick and I have talked about this before, and it's nice, Rick, that you give us letters like this, but you're the one that has to work with the individual every single day. So I'm sure you've made a positive choice, and I'll back you 100%.
Thank you.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Robania to our HR Director's position at Grade 13 Step 1 under Article 2.
So moved.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Unanimous as well.
Thank you. It's effective 7/31/23.
7/31/23. Next on the agenda would be an acceptance of a gift from a family to the fire department. It was Kathleen Devare, and she gave a gift to the fire department in a very nice letter. Just to give you a breakdown of that letter, she was very thankful for the fire department personnel that came to her house. I believe it could be her husband or somebody that she was with, Louis, with the same last name, D. Devare, who more or less needed some assistance, and he did get that assistance. And one of his wishes was he did not have to go to the hospital. I guess Louis was pretty sick, and he was very happy that he could stay at home with his loved ones and those who he was surrounded by that he was very comfortable with. Unfortunately, Louis passed away on December 17, 2022, but according to this note, he was very happy on the way he had, he was able to stay home with his loved ones. And not only him being happy, but it also made it a little easier and lifted the burden a little more for the Devare family that Louis was where he wanted to be when he passed. So again, we, again, my prayers to Louis and my best to Kathleen as well, and thank you for your donation as well. Motion to accept the donation?
Motion to accept the gift for the fire department.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman. I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Send a letter of appreciation.
Yes, thank you. Make that as well. The next is also an appointment for the Metro West Transit Authority. I believe we have someone on, I don't have to read the letter.
You do not. Obviously, we need to appoint a designee.
It's something that we have a representative from the Select Board to represent us with the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. Usually, it's Mike. And Mike, if you would like to take it, would let me appoint you?
I'll be more than happy to take it for another year.
A motion to appoint Mike as our representative?
So moved. And if I could just suggest, you know, we have the new assistant administrator coming in, you know, if Mike ends up on a day where he can't make the meeting.
Sure. So we can make him his designee?
Yeah. You are entitled to put a, I've been the backup in the past. I think John would be the better backup than me.
I think that's a good idea. That'll get his feet wet as well.
Can do that.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
A motion by Tom, and I second that and make that unanimous.
Thank you.
Just want to go for yourself.
No, it's all right.
Okay.
Give yourself a pat on the back, Mike.
Yeah. Next on the agenda is a note that I got involved with, with a fellow who asked me to help him out, and I conferred with Rick and also Deputy Chief Tizino. I guess there were some concerns with the intersection of South Main and Fruit Streets, where it was pretty congested, and there has been some accidents in the past there. And just to give people a little more caution when they drive that area, Robbie, Deputy Chief Tizino, recommended a four-way stop. So just to read his note, Rick, at the request of Select Board Chair, I met with John Barrows regarding his concern about the intersection of South Main Street and Fruit Street. Mr. Barrows originally asked about having a full set of four-way traffic lights installed to address the issues he is concerned about. After I met with him, we agreed that making the intersection a four-way stop might be a better way to proceed. If the Select Board can consider this request, I would appreciate it. My best, Deputy Chief Rob Tizino. Anybody have any questions or concerns regarding this request?
I mean, I know from experience, we've had a fatality there. We've had some very, very serious accidents, primarily people that just don't stop at the stop sign, to the point that we increased the size of the stop sign, we added flashing lights on the stop sign. We've done a number of different things to try to mitigate the potential dangers there. There was a suggestion about putting a four-way light there. My opinion, there are other intersections that we're going to have to replace the lights fairly soon, such as West Street Exchange and Congress, which is an older system, and would justify a new light there, more so than at this intersection. But this does present some dangers for some quirky reason that we've yet to figure out. I agree with the suggestion put forth by Deputy Chief Tizino. I think that he found a good middle ground to try to make things safe for people. The only thing I would recommend that, A, we put the same stop signs that have the flashing lights that are solar generated, and secondarily, Mr. Chairman, that as you're coming from South Main Street, CVS, Uptown, there's a bend in the road there that we have to give people a warning that they're coming to a stop sign for line of sight reasons, so that you don't have, where traffic's backing up and all of a sudden someone comes around that curve and traffic's not as heavy as usual, and now you have a rear-end accident there. I'm not as concerned about the other direction because the line of sight is straight and clear, meaning if you're looking up towards the center of town, folks coming down the center of town, there's a clear line of sight. So I, my motion would be that we approve the recommendation as put forth by Deputy Chief Rob Tizino, with the caveat that we put a stop sign warning sign on the curve, and he'll know right where it is.
Yep.
Which is, as I said, just as you're headed towards pins. We can work on that.
And also the flashing lights on the stop sign.
Yeah, correct. I mean, so it should be equipped the same as the other two stop signs that are presently there.
Okay.
To advise.
Michael?
I would second that motion.
Make that unanimous as well. Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is invitation to speak. No, no one here. Okay. Correspondents? Any member of any correspondents that did like to discuss?
I don't.
And there is no executive session. So therefore, if there's no other comments or concerns or questions or anything to make, we would not entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody, and thank you for tuning in, and have a good week. Thank you.